...under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I've got a couple of quick ceremonial items. First thing is Vice Mayor Young was recognized today as a honored at the Scout luncheon as a friend of scouting, so for his lifetime achievement in scouting. So congratulations, Mr. Young.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
And I think, and people showed up in spite of you being honored, which is pretty cool. And then I think, Mr. Lyons, you have someone you'd like to recognize?
Yes, we'd like to introduce Police Chief Carl Dur. While he comes forward, I did want to take an opportunity to commend Deputy Chief Mike Bowen, who bridged the time between Chief Christman's retirement and the arrival of Chief Dur this Monday. Chief Bowen hasn't always been a true professional, dedicated servant, and I did want to publicly thank Chief Bowen for his outstanding service. Carl Dur comes to us with 32 years' experience in law enforcement, worked for the city of Boca Raton, I believe, as well as many years with the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office. Chief Dur had career aspirations to be a police chief, and his mentor said, perhaps you might need to work at a city police department and maybe look at leaving the sheriff's department. So Chief Dur moved his family from South Florida to Eugene, Oregon. That's a long move, to Eugene, Oregon, where he, I think, started as captain but was quickly promoted to Assistant Police Chief. We selected Chief Dur, came to work on Monday. We're honored to have him here and be part of our leadership team.
Mayor Council, thank you. I'm City Manager Lyons. I appreciate it. I'm really looking forward to it. I can tell you, the nine days I've been in the city, I've felt very welcomed, and I'm very honored to take over a fantastic police department. Deputy Chief Bowen's done a good job, and I've been introduced to the staff, and I'll use a fire rescue. I've been drinking water through a fire hose, but I'm really excited to be a part of the community and to see how I can add to the future of, to the city of Murfreesboro.
Great. We're glad you're here. Welcome, welcome to Murfreesboro.
Well, uh...
Mayor, I might just add one more thing. Chief Dur has gotten many calls, as well as there's been outreach to me saying, you know, I want to meet the new police chief. So in two to three weeks, we're going to schedule a community meet and greet. Perhaps we'll go to Patterson Community Center, 5:00 to 7:00 o'clock. We'll pick a day where we can send out invitations, have community members come to meet Chief Dur. I think it has been a whirlwind couple of days with everyone wanting to shake his hand, meet him, and certainly he's got a large staff as well. So we'll give him a couple of weeks to kind of get his feet on the ground, and then we'll have a community meet and greet that certainly lets you know when that will occur.
I would recommend that he get in contact with Mr. Turner, who was here tonight, and get his input on whatever his issues were with crime and violence. I know what he's talking about. And Chief Dur, you know, me and Glenn were real close. So I'm looking forward to, in my little old four months, however long I got, probably longer, we will get together. We'll take care of the neighborhood and do what we can, you know, and Mike, Mike's done a good job, and I see Sanders back there. I don't know the rest of y'all, but I know your faces, but Sanders, Watson, and Mike Bowen, and you've got a good crew to work with. You really do.
Last but not least, you know, we talk about Murfreesboro being a family, and Brian Hardison, who works in our building in Co's Department, he works with Amelia Kerr, helping out with signage. His son passed away, I think it was this weekend, Friday or Saturday he passed away. He's 24 years old, so we want to keep Brian's family in our thoughts and our prayers. Okay, you have several items on your consent agenda.
There's no questions or comments. I move for approval as presented.
Second. All right, we have a motion and second. Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. You have the minutes from the March 24, 2016, regular meeting in front of you. Any additions or deletions?
Move for approval. Second.
Motion and second. Ms. Wright.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Well, consider for passage on second reading ordinance 16OZ05 to rezone in, I'm sorry, I skipped third readings. Consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 15OZ56 to zone an area at 3726 Manson Pike as planned residential development, PRD District, Springfield Apartments, and Gateway Design Overlay, GD01 District.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion and second. Ms. Wright.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Now we'll go to second readings. Consider for passage on second reading ordinance 16OZ05 to rezone an area along Manson Pike, Maddington Park, to plan residential development, PRD District.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion and second. Ms. Wright.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move to new business and consider recommendations of the deputy police chief on awarding a bid for automated traffic light enforcement systems. Deputy Chief Bowen.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and council members. When Chief Christman first brought up the option of automated red light enforcement, he stressed that the need for the program was safety, the safety of motorists, bicyclists, and pedestrians. Traffic safety is the reason I'm here tonight. The city uses a comprehensive approach to traffic safety from road and signal design to enforcement and education. In addition to the officer dedicated to the automated red light enforcement program, MPD utilizes a team of eight motorcycle officers, three aggressive driving unit officers, and three DUI enforcement officers to specifically address traffic problems through full-time enforcement and investigations. Additionally, in 2013, a supervisory position was created to help us improve the way we address traffic-related issues and manage personnel resources. Currently, the department partners with the Governor's Highway Safety Office to not only enforce traffic laws but to increase public awareness through campaigns like Click It or Ticket and Thumbs Down to Texting While Driving. We also work in conjunction with the Murfreesboro Fire and Rescue Department to assist the public in the installation of child safety restraints while providing education on their proper usage. In addition to the measures already in place, is our goal to request funding for additional traffic safety programs in the upcoming budget. The technology associated with automated traffic enforcement has proven to be a reliable means to detect and enforce red light violations. Additionally, the use of technology is a force multiplier. The system provides 24-hour coverage every day of the year without breaks or laps in coverage. Accomplishing the same goal utilizing traditional enforcement methods would require an extensive amount of police personnel resources. Since inception, the program has resulted in the issuance of over 143,800 citations. During that same time period, signalized intersections in Murfreesboro have grown from 124 to 144, a 16% increase. Likewise, the population of Murfreesboro has grown by approximately 11,000 residents, an increase of about 10%. Significant retail growth attracts commuters from all over middle Tennessee. With the growth we have experienced, does safety conclude that traffic volume has also increased? The use of automated enforcement plays a significant role in our comprehensive approach to traffic safety. According to recent data compiled through crash reports, motor vehicle crashes at signalized intersections are down 37% in the eight years since the program became operational. This decrease in crashes has reduced potential injuries as well as associated vehicle repair costs. The $50 civil penalty for running a red light pays for the cost to equip and operate the automated system. The city has no financial liability for the technology, installation, software, operating costs, or collections associated with the system. After an invitation to bid process was completed, Census America was the apparent low bidder. Census will receive $29 per collected citation. The proposed contract is for a five-year period and is estimated to impact the general fund with an approximate $375,000 increase in annual revenue. This increase partially offsets the costs associated with the police department's comprehensive traffic safety program. The city will have the option to extend the contract for three additional one-year periods. The locations for the automated enforcement system are the same intersections and approaches covered by our most recent contract. Additionally, the proposed contract provides the option to change or add locations at a cost of $2 extra per citation at any new intersection. Any such change or expansion would be brought before the council for consideration. Should state law change to eliminate automated traffic enforcement systems, the city has no liability to the vendor. Census is currently serving Chattanooga, Tennessee. Department members not only visited Chattanooga and viewed its operation but verified other references as well. To conclude, over 5,800 traffic crashes were reported in Murfreesboro in 2015. Using a comprehensive traffic safety strategy, we have reduced the number of traffic crashes at signalized intersections by over 30%. Automated enforcement is just one of the tools we are using to make our roads safer while helping us better manage available resources. Under the new proposal, the impact to the city general fund would be an approximate $375,000 increase in annual revenue from roughly the same amount of citations issued from the previous year. This figure will partially offset the city's expenses associated with our comprehensive traffic safety plan. Census America is low-bear to provide the services needed for an automated traffic enforcement program. I respectfully request that they be awarded the proposed contract. At this time, I'd like to invite Sergeant Clayton Williams and Officer Andrew Graves to come forward to share a few comments with you.
Good evening. Sergeant Clayton Williams of Murfreesboro Police Department supervise our aggressive drive unit and also our motorcycle unit, which is primarily tasked with doing enforcement activities in the city. And I was asked to come here tonight just to talk about how red light camera automated enforcement plays in our overall mission of what we do and also how that might contrast with, versus using officers to try to accomplish the same task. Few brief points I wanted to talk to, one of them being safety was a big concern. Manned enforcement versus automated enforcement. Don't think there's anything in particular that would cause an inherent safety risk a camera versus an officer otherwise than just limiting everyday normal exposure to traffic. Logistics, in order to successfully enforce traffic light violations, for example, the intersection of Thompson Lane and Old Ford Parkway requires a minimum of two officers to manage one approach. One of those has to man a vehicle that, or some type of apparatus that has a video in place because city court, in order to find, make a ruling on a case that is being contested, the city requires that there be evidence and video evidence to show the violation. So you must have that person there, and then another person after that violation has occurred to be able to stop that car and address that and issue the citation. So it limits you to only doing one approach unless you have more officers, so it would increase the amount of manpower, man-hours that would be needed to effectively do so. The impact to traffic flow, especially in that intersection, we have done those things in the past, been a part of that. Unfortunately, where a lot of these are located, it's around a lot of our businesses. When we are doing that enforcement is also during times of peak hours of the day, not only for traffic but for those businesses to be conducting business in that time. Oftentimes, we would, the violator would choose to pull into one of the parking lots of that business. That would have us there with a car or a vehicle with blue lights on and maybe even causing disruption to their traffic flow, to their business. Not that the need to enforce the law is less greater than someone being able to conduct business, but we don't want to offer anything that's going to be in their way of conducting that if there's a better way to do so. Oftentimes, when I encounter citizens who have received a red light citation, it's a topic of conversation if they see me in uniform or approach, or just people I know, I feel like most of them, moreover, say, once they've received that, they say, well, I know I'm not going to do that again. And most of them are good law-abiding citizens, and that's enough for them. Sum up, for some people, and I believe in my professional opinion that when I deal with somebody, no matter if it's any type of traffic violation, I think most people heed a citation, and they go about their way, and they're going to remember that for a while, whether that comes from an officer or an automated camera. Some folks who just choose to disobey and disregard the laws, either way, an automated citation or one handed from an officer, even though the fine may be a little bit different, it's what they choose to do afterward. After all, what we're trying to do is influence human behavior when they're behind the wheel. And I think automated enforcement, for those people that we're trying to reach, I believe accomplishes the same mission. That's all I have this time. Be happy to answer any questions. I'm going to let Officer Graves speak just a moment.
Thank you for allowing me to come tonight and speak on behalf of this. I'm a proponent for the red light enforcement intersections. Having received a traffic ticket myself while at work, I'm still for it. I was in the wrong. I didn't know what was, I thought it was still yellow at the time, so I'm still a proponent for it. I took my licks, paid the fine. Coming from, I'm on second shift currently, and when manpower exists, I'm assigned traffic when we have additional units. So in the five years I've been here, I've worked approximately 1,500 to 2,000 crashes. While investigating those crashes, many times they've been close to an intersection or in the intersection as well. The ones that haven't been involved in the intersection, where they've been close to it, like 50 to 100 feet away, they stated they stopped, it was like a front- rear collision where the person in front stopped, and they said, the light was turning red, I didn't want to get that ticket, so I stopped. Otherwise, if it had been at an intersection where they didn't have the red light cameras, they would have continued on going through, causing a significant road hazard. So I do see it from the deterrent standpoint on that point because I've had several come to me and speak to me on behalf of that. Another aspect for us is, like Sergeant Williams stated, with intersections when they're extremely busy, just sitting at a traffic light, it's not the safest thing in the world for us to turn our lights on as well and enter that intersection with the amount of traffic that they're there. It can cause a greater risk for us to try and stop that offender by adding another car in the intersection because not everybody can see our lights or hear our siren, whereas the automated traffic enforcement will go ahead and issue the citation appropriately without causing any other risk to causing a crash in the intersection. One final point that I also have is in solving crashes themselves during investigations. I've worked crashes before at these intersections where both parties will be coming from different directions, and they'll both state that they have the green traffic signal, which we know you can't have the green traffic signal at the same time. Both, they'll think they have it. And without any witnesses there and damage corroborating either side, it's very difficult to determine who is the at-fault vehicle and who isn't. With the red light traffic tickets, well, not tickets, but the cameras and the software, I've been able to use that footage to show who was at fault in that, who crossed the line and was the contributing factor, who didn't fail to, who failed to yield the right of way in that. So it does help, not just from a, you know, I'm not here for the economic standpoint, but I'm here for the safety and the deterrence standpoint, and I do believe that they are with merit in regards to the city of Murfreesboro when they do assist us. Thank you.
At this time, staff is available to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions to staff?
I've got some questions, but not really for Mike's folks.
Thanks, Deputy Chief. Thank you.
Deputy Chief, before you get away, I just want to compliment you on the fantastic job you've done running our city's police department the last few months.
Absolutely.
It's been a phenomenal job. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So a couple of things that are, that are, I don't know, one of them's just an idea that I want to throw out here to you guys as we get, are we, are we done with the comments and starting the discussion generally? Sorry, I didn't, all right. One of them would be the idea of, you know, doing something specific with this money, specific to advertising or whatever, you know, whatever it be. I didn't see that in here anywhere, but, you know, where we, if we were to take this, I'm just kind of throwing this out here, a couple of these ideas I wanted to throw out there to you, but maybe, you know, any of the money that comes up from the, from the red light tickets, that maybe that is specifically directed towards traffic enforcement one way or another, where, you know, it could be advertising or it could be, you already know that the...
No, I was going to, when you're finished with your questions, I'll be glad to come back to that one when...
Yeah, so the other one that I wanted to throw out there, and this might be a question for Craig, if this is, you know, appropriate idea or argument or a legal situation is, you know, one of the questions, you know, I have a philosophical issue with the idea of having what turns out to be not, not because of anything that we've done, but because of what the state has done. You know, this is a voluntary situation as it exists right now. Whether the person pays it or not is basically up to the person. That's just kind of how it is. It's a bummer we didn't create that problem, but that's the situation we're in. So I started thinking through, you know, I'm the kind of guy that I'm just like, hey, look, we ought to be going after everybody or nobody, you know? I mean, we shouldn't be doing this unless we are actually intending to get the money from these folks. Well, I understand why it's not feasible to go try to get, you know, to sue somebody over $11 or $7, right? But let me throw this out here to you. What if, if somebody had three or four or five, whatever the number is that everybody kind of came to an agreement on, let's say they had four unpaid tickets. What if we had a policy that basically said, okay, look, you get four of these, that's however many dollars, 650 or more dollars, I don't know, I can't do the math in my head right now, but it's a lot of, you know, at that point, it's a lot more dollars because you've got the 163 total with the court cost by then. So at that point, does it become feasible for us to say, hey, we're, we're going to enforce this? And whether that be garnishing wages or whatever it is that we would typically do for a $600 penalty that a citizen owns the city, or owes the city? So if it's enforceable, I mean, it seems to me that at least at that point, we're saying, hey, it's not voluntary. Now, maybe one might be, you might squeak by on one, and if their statistics are correct, you won't have a lot more of the others. But for the ones that keep racking them up, they will have to be aware of the idea that, hey, look, if I just keep throwing them away, they're going to come after the money. And at least at some point, we're making it where it's more fair and yet feasible, perhaps. Craig, that'll be your slider. But I, I don't know, does that make any sense? It's just something, I just am trying to think through, how do you, how do we get this to where we're either enforcing it or we're not, you know?
I'll take the first one. I'll defer to our counselor next. In terms of the specific use of the money, we went back to look at the number of staff who are dedicated toward specifically traffic safety. We counted 15 officers. We've got Officer Schubert, who actually is solely dedicated to the automated system, but the aggressive driving unit, the motorcycle officers, the DUI enforcement team, we've got 15 officers. We're spending well in excess of any money that comes in in the red light system, but as you heard Deputy Chief Bowen's presentation, we're also going to add some money for education in this year's budget. All of those officers are funded in the general fund, their cars are funded in the general fund, and the revenue from red light cameras goes into the general fund. So I think we felt like there was, whatever, if you earmark the money, it's somewhat of an accounting fiction because it's already contributing toward general fund activities. I think we, we had the estimate close to $1 million worth of expense, maybe more, depending on what you included.
It may be. It may be that you could call it an accounting fiction, but it could also be that we're just dedicated to making that happen and that, you know, it really takes away from the capability of the normal budget to move things from this piece to this piece, that we're saying, hey, this is dedicated. It is separate. There's no way that we can say, well, we're going to take $300,000 out of, you know, whatever Parks and Rec to go over here and put that into police. So if it was dedicated, whereas if it's in the general fund, which I know, you know, Parks and Rec may not have been the right, the right example, but anything else that exists in the general fund, that that could still get moved around and really not end up. What I'm trying to get after is to have a net gain in our traffic, whether it be people or advertising, our traffic enforcement, one way or another, you know? And I go through, you know, part of the philosophical thing again with this is, every single day I see somebody run a red light in Murfreesboro, Tennessee, every day. I mean, and so the idea that this is the only thing or, you know, a major part of it, I understand that it's a major part of it, but I feel like we got to do more, I guess is what I'm saying, and I'd love to be able to dedicate more to that. I guess that's my point.
I would love to see a billboard, all, billboards throughout the city that, you know, we do an aggressive marketing campaign that lets people know, you know, running a red light kills. I mean, but, but really hit more where people don't just have to see a traffic camera, they see something that lets them know, you know, we're really promoting it.
While we've been through this, you know, procurement process, we've heard those suggestions, you know, from the council members, and that has been communicated directly to the police department, that the education, the billboards, some other type of advertisement will be included in their budget this year. Absolutely.
Yeah, I would say too, I think the red lights can be distracting, but these are far more distracting with any red light cameras that we're going to have, and that's coming from someone who uses this way more than I should in the car. But, you know, that's something, I think that not only, when we look at these funds that we, we not just hit running red lights, but we hit distracted driving in general in the city. And I think there could be an education program that starts at high schools, that, you know, that starts at even in middle schools to let people know before they, they get to driving. This is what we're, we're working on.
Counselor, I want to maybe correct some perception, and I don't mean to parse words or anything else, but use the word voluntary as far as the payment. And we heard earlier some discussion along those lines, it isn't voluntary. It is, it is actually a fine that is imposed upon a person, and it is one that has to be paid, so it's, it's not technically voluntary. I don't know if you meant it that way.
Yeah, well, I meant it from a, from a standpoint of that we don't enforce it. It becomes quasi, maybe that's a better word, quasi voluntary because we won't enforce it.
I just, I didn't want to leave that in the perception, the perception that it is, it is actually a fine. And we do engage in collection efforts to, to collect the funds. And so really what you're talking about is perhaps a term is an enhanced collection where we do seek a civil remedy judgment against the person and, and collect it in that manner. And that can be done, and it is difficult to do that for a fine that's $50, and there's probably a level where it does make sense to do it. I probably wouldn't encourage a specific number because it might encourage people to, you know, lessen, less compliance than otherwise.
You got three, you don't pay the first three, but you pay...
So, so what we could look at doing is, on an enhanced collective, collection effort is, is looking at those that are particularly egregious as far as the violation and put effort towards collecting particularly on those as, as one way of encouraging people to comply with it. And we could, we could look at random enforcement on, on some to make sure that, you know, we are getting the compliance level that we, that we do need to. We do have a high level of compliance, although, you know, it certainly could be, could be better. And so we can take a look at those, and there's, there's obviously a cost involved in that, and perhaps some of the revenue that, that we've talked about could be used to enhance the enforcement efforts or collection efforts in, for those fines.
Sorry, I should have asked it, but is there a pending state attorney general opinion about, is it, is that pending, is that coming?
I'm not aware of a pending attorney general opinion on, on the matter.
There was a request Andy Holt made.
Oh.
But I don't know that, I don't know that the attorney general has to respond. I would assume that he probably will make a ruling and respond to the question of what does only mean in the code, but...
Oh, yeah. We'll, we'll watch for that. If that, an opinion comes down, we'll, we'll get a hold of that.
Mayor, we accept the recommendation of the deputy chief regarding the traffic camera contract.
I second it.
All right, we have a motion and second.
So can I ask a question?
Sure.
So what, what is...
So what, what is our, what would be our process on some kind of enhanced collection? What, is that something that we set as a policy? Is that something that you guys do from the legal office? What, what happens there?
I think, I think we could look at it from, certainly from our office as far as a resource allocation issue. So we'll take a look at it from that standpoint, and it probably could be dovetailed with an education program and how the funds would be, how the funds would be used.
I mean, I'll tell you guys, just this, since we've got a motion in a second, it's going to have a lot to do with whether I support it. I mean, just my personal, I mean, that's just where I am with it. So I don't know really where that leaves me, to be honest. That, that kind of leaves me in the, I don't want to talk about it again in another couple of months, but.
Can we, because I think that's something, it's a good point. We all have talked about the, the collections on there. Is there a way that we can figure a more aggressive, if we're saying 90% of the people who are paying the bills, so we're talking about a minority, we're talking about 10%, and is there a way that we can look and drive down into that number on what is a more effective way to do that? A better way, in a more aggressive way, if it's, you know, internally, we say if it gets to X number, then we're going out, we're going, that's what triggers, we can't say that externally.
I'm not, I'm not one to say I have the right number or the right exact answer, but I think a random, and I want you to use your resources wisely. I mean, I, I agree with all that. I guess I'm just, some indication that it moves me away from the issue that I'm having with this as to the quasi voluntary piece of this and, and the way that it's turning out.
We'll work with the legal department to look at their resources and how to address it. You know, part of this conversation makes me think about a subway system I rode on, and I don't exactly remember where it was, but you bought a ticket and you got on a train. There wasn't a turnstile to go through. You didn't hand it to anybody. You sat down on the train, and somebody may come by and take your ticket, and someone may not come by and take your ticket. But if you were on the train without a ticket, you got a pretty good, good fine. The idea of a random enforcement, you don't know if you're going to be the one, even though it may be one ticket or two, may be something for us to consider that you don't know that, you know, you're going to get something from, from court on, on the civil action. Kind of keep you honest, is I guess what I'm saying with the random.
I mean, I'm sorry.
I just want to make a very brief comment, and, and, and this is going to be really short. We all agree that we want the intersections to be safer, and I sent a photograph of an intersection at Northfield and South Springs Road where I was walking my dog two days ago. I sent it to Rob, and I sent it to Rick. And, and in that picture, there's a vehicle sitting on its side that had just been rolled over, and somebody had run a red light clearly, because the light wasn't green for both people. We need to aggressively come up with a campaign, whether it be billboards, whether it be stop bars, whether it be, and I've begged for it for years. I'm delighted we've got a contract now that gives us money enough that we can go out, actually do some of this stuff that wouldn't just be coming from the general fund. So I do think that there's some very positive things about what, the advantage of being able to make money. I think the fact that we've got a good contract is a really good thing. It gives us opportunities to do things we haven't done in the past. But, but, you know, we, we have to go with other options. I know Craig Tindall mentioned the using of the dummy cars on the intersections and just parking cars there with dummies in them that, that get people's attention. They're not going to run the light if they think the police is watching. So I mean, there, there's more creative ways and things that we can do to improve the safety on our roadways, and that's the whole goal here. I mean, we're just trying to make the roads safer. And the red light cameras are just one tool in the whole bag, and I think we've relied on that one tool excessively maybe in the past, but I'm excited about the fact that the other council members are talking about more aggressively going after the payment of the tickets. I mean, if, if the ticket's issued, I like Ron's idea of, or Rob's idea of the, the random selection, just pick one out. I mean, it doesn't matter how many tickets you've had, just randomly every 15 or 20 or whatever the number is you pick out, go after that person and say, you know, you got to pay your ticket. And so, and when word gets out that, you know, you do have to pay your ticket, or you might hit the lottery and be one that has to come in and pay it in front of a judge. I mean, that, but, but we want our intersections to be safer. We want our roads to be safer, and ultimately, that's the whole goal of what we're trying to accomplish with red light cameras, so.
That was brief.
That's brief for me.
Mr. Ryan, if this does pass, you know, you and I have talked about over the years about directing fines to a certain, where we say, okay, this is where we have that. And I understand why that doesn't necessarily make sense because it's hard to put dollar figures on all of those things. But I do think, you know, we all have strengths and weaknesses, and there's stuff I'm good at, and there's stuff I clearly know that I'm not good at. And I think that to ask the police department to do an advertising campaign or a, or a education campaign, I'm sure there's people who are there who are good at that, but that's not what they specialize in. And I think if we are going to get serious on distracted driving and running red lights, we need to earmark a certain amount of dollars per year that we can run an effective campaign. If that's social media, if that's, you know, if it's TV ads, if it's newspaper ads, if it's billboards, you know, I don't know what it is, but we need to find people who are smarter than us that know how to do that and who have done those campaigns, and we get serious on saying, look, this is not about money. We're trying to stop this. And it's a culture change. So I, I mean, I would love to see us go ahead and say, let's get proposals on how much it's going to cost to run a campaign like that, and then we, we do that.
Yeah, when I had indicated we'd earmark money in the police budget, it wasn't for police employees necessarily to do that. It would be to go get some help with social media, TV ads, so forth. So I, hopefully we're thinking the same way.
Well, the one thing that comes to my mind about it, and it kind of resonates with what Rick was saying about dedicating these funds, I mean, if the primary purpose for what we're conducting the, this program is safety, then I'm not sure we shouldn't dedicate the funds that are raised through this program to safety. And I understand what you're saying is that it's dollars, but it would help us to understand that these are not going into the general fund, but will be going for the, either a marketing campaign or the enforcement and the, of the safety program. And I don't know that that would be too, that ought to be a clear understanding, and maybe it is through part of our recommendation, that those funds are dedicated to a safety program, either in marketing or to the enforcement, the automated enforcement, so that it doesn't just find its way somewhere else. Then I think we've made a clear statement that any funds, this is not a revenue producing thing for the city. This is truly about safety.
You want to make, I mean, can we make an amendment?
Sure.
I mean, are you?
No.
Yeah, all right.
Okay. I'd ask for that amendment to the resolution.
Could you reword that so we're clear on what you want to do?
The funds generated from our automated enforcement fines would be committed to the safety program, a safety program related to our, to traffic safety.
So 100%.
100%.
Would that include, like, the officers that, that?
The officers are a safety.
Operational expense.
Operational expenses to the traffic safety in our community.
It'll be a, Ms. Wright, I'd say, you know, if we can define to say, you know, Officer Schubert, this is what his operational costs are, it's really just going to be almost like a, a sub budget that we can easily just identify and go through. And, you know, we don't have to pull it out of the general fund, but we can at least say, here's, here's, here's where we're tracking this. So we can show, the thing is, it may show that, like you were saying, Mr. Ryan, that it's a million, it costs us a million dollars to do the, the aggressive monitoring, but, and we're only bringing in 400,000, but we easily can, as a council, see that.
Okay. And we're glad to show it to you. I, we can, I think it's going to be a million dollars in expense and 300 some odd thousand dollars in, in revenue, so.
Well, and we, we may, you know, look, I think, I think it's important to get this going to a separate area. I mean, it just, it just, I think it helps remove any of the issues as far as why we do this, so that somebody doesn't have to know the ins and outs of our budget, which is 100 and however many pages long, to understand that this money is going from here directly into here, and that's what that money's going to be used for, period. Now, I would also say to you, though, that if you guys, after kind of sorting through this, like I've seen you do a couple of times in the past, when we, when we pass something, that if you guys come back and say, all right, look, guys, we got the intent of it. It was difficult to, to put it together maybe exactly like this, but here's what I think will solve the intent, and you think there's a, a good way to do that, well, can you just bring that back to us? We'll go ahead and approve it that way. Is that, is that fair enough?
Absolutely. We'd be glad to do that.
One other thing before we vote on this, I wanted to bring up, and I apologize, but this be it. We had some comments from our old carrier, and I just want to make sure and ask you guys, I think it's appropriate to at least ask, you know, there were a couple of things that they brought up that were, you know, I, I don't know. I mean, we're 100% good on how the bid was placed, how it was received, that, that all those things are in order, and any, I mean, any of the things that they brought up that we need to make sure we're aware of, I mean, any.
Staff believes their bid is compliant?
And how about the 24% violation tickets? Do you, do you know what?
I don't.
I didn't understand that.
I don't quite understand what his, his, his comment was. I don't know how that system was set up, their review process, their equipment. I don't know anything about that.
Yeah.
We did, officers did take a, a trip to Chattanooga to go personally visit. This wasn't a reference check over the phone.
Satisfied, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Here, we have a motion, motion as amended that we have. Ms. Wright, call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
All right.
We'll now move to consider for approval of certificate of compliance for wine in retail stores at Sean Bloom at A+ number 217, 4106 Franklin Road, and A+ number 223 and 328 at South Church Street.
Mayor, this is additional, like we had recently. The stores are starting to apply for wine in stores per the state law, and this certificate of compliance application was in order, and we recommend approval.
And Ms. Wright, I apologize, but I have a baseball game that I am coaching in 11 minutes at Starplex, so I may have to ask for a police escort to get me there. Hope that's appropriate.
See you, man. See you, buddy. Ms. Wright, all these are compliant with?
Yes, sir.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye. Next item is considered for approval of a renewal of certificate of compliance from Ms. Evelyn J. Robinson at Murfreesboro Wine and Spirits, 3016 South Church Street.
This certificate of compliance is for a liquor store. Every two years, they have to get renewed through the ABC, and our part of that renewal is approving the certificate of compliance. The application is in order. It is a longstanding location.
Okay, thank you.
Move for approval.
Have a motion in a second. Ms. Wright, would you please call the roll?
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye. Next item is pursuant to Resolution 16R PHOH adopted by the city council on February 11th, 2016, to conduct a public hearing to consider adoption of plan of services for, for and the annexation of approximately 3.7 acres located along Northwest Broad Street, Ron Buck applicant. Notice of said public hearing was published in a March 21st issue of a local newspaper.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Donald Anthony with the planning department. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. The applicant, Mr. Ron Buck, has requested that the city annex a 3.67 acre portion of a nine acre parcel located at 5030 Northwest Broad Street, which is shown on the screen right now. This property previously housed an auto salvage business, but has been vacant for about the last two years. The front 5.38 acres of the parcel are already within the city limits, having been annexed in 1994. When that annexation occurred, the back portion of the property was not included, and it remained in the unincorporated county. The study area measures approximately 800 feet in width by 170 feet in depth, and the site currently has access to Northwest Broad Street. The planning department contacted other city departments, as well as several non-city departments, to determine whether the study area could be adequately served by public utilities and other essential services. MED will provide electrical service to the site, CUD will provide water service, and Murfreesboro Water and Sewer will provide sanitary sewer service. Fire, police, and sanitation have all indicated that they can serve this site as well. A copy of the complete plan of services is available in your meeting materials. The property is currently zoned light industrial in the county, and the applicant has not indicated any particular desired zoning or use for this property at this time. Therefore, if annexed, the property would come into the city with an interim zoning of light industrial as well. The planning commission considered this item at its February 3rd, 2016 meeting, and voted unanimously to approve both the annexation and the plan of services. Staff, can I answer any questions that you may have?
Mr. Anthony? Before we open the public hearing, if you're not familiar with our public hearing rules, we'll invite you to the podium to ask questions. Ask you to speak three minutes or less. If you, unless you are a spokesman for a group, please address all questions to the, to the council, and at the end of the public hearing, we'll ask staff to help us answer those questions. With that, I'll open the public hearing.
Good job, good job.
Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Comments, questions, motions? Read B. Which one?
Read A.
Mr. Anthony, go ahead.
Read A.
Okay. Consider for adoption of a resolution to adopt a plan of services for approximately 3.7 acres located along Northwest Broad Street, Ron Buck applicant.
Move for approval. Second.
Have a motion second. Ms. Wright.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
This me?
Mm-hmm.
Next item?
You want to vote?
You're right.
Aye. The next item is consider recommendations of the water and sewer director.
We need to do item B.
We need to item B. Consider for adoption of Resolution 16RA08 to annex approximately 37 acres along Northwest Broad Street, Ron Buck applicant.
Move for approval. It's 3.7 acres.
Second.
You know, they changed all this, and anyway. All right, we have a motion in a second. Ms. Wright, would you please call the roll?
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Our next item is consideration of recommendations of the water sewer board. Mr. Gower, welcome.
Vice Mayor Young, members of council, thank you for the opportunity to come for you tonight. I really thought it was going to take longer to get up here, so I figured this is quicker than I expected. It's a good thing. There's three recommendations associated with this, but I wanted to give you the, I'm doing something wrong here. Wanted to give you a brief, little five, four slides, just to kind of bring it all together and hopefully give you the, the whole picture before we ask for your approval on certain, on the award of the contract and a special sanitary sewer assessment district. What you see in yellow with some pink overlay, the pink is the city limits, the yellow is the area along South Church Street. It's across from the Walmart and Joe B. Jackson Parkway. It's about 32.6 acres of prime real estate, I guess, for commercial highway use, although I'm not a planner. I'll let Gary zone it. But it was really a pocket of, of commercial highway that did not have access to sewer without having to go under US 231. And for such a small area, it really was too much of a financial burden for one particular development to get sewer underneath. development to get sewer underneath. They would have to bore under Church Street or US 231. So what we've done is we let a construction contract, which is effectively extends, if you see the green sewer on the west side of 231, extend a small section of gravity sewer to 231, bore under 231, and then extend a small forest main to the north and south, extending along the frontage of those properties. This would allow for a low-pressure grinder pump system. Each of the properties would have to install a small pump and forest main, and then pump it back into the sewer underneath Church Street. So what we did, we, as we've done in the past, is we've set for a recruitment mechanism for the money that we would spend on this project, we're asking for the creation of a South Church Street number one, special sanitary sewer assessment district. We're just calling it number one because there might be a number two. We don't have number two in mind yet, but number one. So what we've done is we've looked at a 10-year financing term at 3.5% interest, one payment period per year. That's our standard financial assumptions. Again, it serves 32.6 acres. If you look at the construction and finance costs, that's $346,160, which is roughly $10,600 per acre. That would be in addition to all of our standard sanitary sewer connection fees. Based on the fact, there's a little twist to this assessment district, based on the fact there are several developments that are ready to go, that already have development plans, I think submitted, or developed and ready to submit, we thought to bypass that financing cost and to look straight at the bid, the $287,887.65, divide that by 32.6 acres, that puts that per acre cost at $8,830. And if somebody were to come in after six months of the final completion of the sewer project, that they would get that reduced rate, since we wouldn't be carrying those financing costs. So that's really the crux of it. I think this is an area that they want the sewer. We're not asking for a public hearing tonight, but I think we're going to change this May 5th. But the recommendations, the three-fold recommendation, is to award the construction contract to Charles Dewey's Construction in the amount of the $287,887.65. Approve the attached ordinance 16-0-16 that establishes the South Church Street number one, special sanitary sewer assessment district, and then set a public hearing prior to the third and final reading, and I think we've changed that to a suggested date of May 12th. So we would ask for your approval. And I'm available for questions.
Move for approval.
Have a motion, second. Ms. Wright, would you call the roll?
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye. Thank you very much. Is that the whole? That was it?
Wait.
Oh, I'm sorry. But make a motion for the public hearing date?
They moved to take the whole recommendation. And so he had his recommendation up there that covered all three of these. Oh, we need to pass the ordinance. Is that what you're asking about, George? Yes. Well, B, we did, because he recommended the 12th, and the motion was to take the recommendations, so the 12th. But we do have an ordinance, first reading on the ordinance, so we should do that.
So A and B were passed with that motion, May 12th, and the contract with Charles Dewey's?
Right.
Okay.
So we'll do C.
Next item is considered for passage on first reading, ordinance 160116, amending chapter 33 of the Murfreesboro City Code by creating section 33214, establishing a sanitary sewer special assessment district to be known as South Church Street number one, sanitary sewer special assessment district.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye. Thank you, Georgia. Thank you. I think that takes care of that. Our next item is beer permits.
We have a special event permit for Providence Christian Academy for an event to be held in private residence on April the 23rd. The application is in order, and we recommend approval.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion, a second. Ms. Wright?
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Next item is payment of statements. Do we have any statements paid tonight?
Not tonight.
Okay. Other business for staff or... I think the mayor has left on your desk a list of potential appointments that we will not act on tonight, but he wants you all to look at and study and make recommendations for these, and this is what we standardly do, is look at them two weeks ahead of time and then bring them up for a motion. Any other business or staff?
Maybe just one update, Mr. Vice Mayor. The city did have its competitive bond sale this week, and proud to announce the interest, the true interest cost was 2.1% fixed 15-year money, so that is outstanding.
Amen. Yeah.
If there's no other business, we're adjourned.